All right, we'll immediately spin into. I'd like to call the order of the committee of the whole for December 14th, 2021 at 5:35 PM. Tenants roll call.
All the persons, Madden.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Capusta.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Wolf is not here. We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
The meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's approved unanimously. Approval of the minutes from November 23rd, 2021?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Those are approved. New business, water utility discussion. The Krieger.
Hello? Good, it's done. So, has everyone got their package? I believe I handed it out to everyone. I also emailed that one to you guys earlier in the week. In that email, I also attached an Excel spreadsheet. I can't print out an Excel spreadsheet and hand it to you, but you all have that Excel spreadsheet to kind of look at. Back in July of 2021, we had started off this kind of water discussion thing, and we said we would be back after budget time to kind of start discussing this again. Now, tonight, all we were doing is showing you these drafts. What we're trying to do is just introduce this to you. We're looking for you to give us some feedback by Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, and then around May of 2022, we're going to bring this thing to a vote so that we have some direction, so that we can plan. So tonight is more just an introduction of these three policies. Myself, a couple of staff members, a consultant are here to kind of ask, answer some questions you might have, but we are more than willing to have you guys come in, sit down and talk to us at any time. We can go through the Excel spreadsheet just to show you more on the private water trust connection policy. So first, let's start with the policy number one, and that is the private water trust connection policy. The two main kind of big points, the one in yellow. The water trust may voluntarily request and apply for connection. We are not forcing anyone to do this. I want to make sure that this is not a force. This is a voluntary thing. And that is one thing that we want to make clear. All right? The other kind of big thing is towards the second, the second last sentence, if full water main replacements are required with five years of, within five years of the agreement, the cost will be assessed to the residents. Why we put that caveat in there is we can do the best we can of the assessment of their system, but if we hook up ours to theirs, we might blow out. And if we don't have some type of kind of protection for the city, this is one of the best ways that we decided to do it. Now, again, this is a draft policy. We are looking for comments from you in the next two months. Okay? Now, the other thing that we're going to do is we, as the city staff, are going to reach out to the remaining private trusts and have them come in, show them the policy, kind of work with them, the Excel spreadsheet to show, hey, this is how you can kind of assess your system, and maybe run through a couple of examples with them, and then kind of get their feedback as well. Now, also that Excel spreadsheet, we kind of stole that a little bit from Meqwan. Meqwan started it. We looked at that Excel spreadsheet. We kind of started it, and we start changing it and manipulating to the city of Muskego. Any kind of questions on that first kind of like thing? And don't get me wrong, I'm not putting you on the spot. If you don't have them, come to us later. This is why we're giving you guys plenty of time to look at this.
Would you prefer us to email suggestions later?
You can email suggestions later. You can come in.
Okay.
You know, if you want to do it clearly, you can do it.
But not now.
Although if you have some now.
Yeah.
I mean, it might be appropriate. That way we can all kind of feedback on what your suggestion is.
Got it. I like the idea that there's sort of the coverage for an incident. I wonder if it might make a little more sense to have it be sort of like a sliding scale that says if it happens four years and 10 months, like there's a percentage. So year one, the residents are 100%. Year two, they're 80, 60, 40, 20, so that it scales so that there's a little bit of a, sort of that buy-in. Obviously, right away, you don't want to happen. But if it happens right at the end of year five, it would be nice if, A, that we did get four years and 12 months out of it, 11 months, then the city would cover a portion versus the residents, kind of that.
That's a good suggestion. And again, we started at five years. If you want to put in an email what your recommendation is, we can kind of include that, and then you guys can all vote on it in May. So that's a great suggestion, so.
Any other comments, thoughts, signed remarks?
I like John's idea.
I didn't have my mic on. I said, I like John's idea.
Good. So, John, if you want to formally send an email, it's a lot easier for me to kind of record that.
I'm taking notes to send you an email.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Along those same lines, some of these private systems are aged differently. I mean, some are newer, some are older. Is there an average age that a system starts to degrade in? Scott?
Before, they were a lot different.
Microphone.
In the mid to late 70s and early 80s. So they're all within 10 years of being the same age.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
And 50 years is typically.
Okay.
On a lot of the infrastructure. Pipes maybe a little longer. We're finding that these pipes are all iron pipes. They're starting to degrade. Some of the systems we took over in the 80s are starting to degrade severely now, which is why there's another policy on for later.
Okay. So if in your evaluation, we have a system that's 50% degraded, how do we?
That'll show up in the value. If you look at the matrix or that spreadsheet.
Yeah.
It puts a value to everything, and then gives them credit for whatever their infrastructure is actually worth.
Okay.
So you give them credit towards what you're going to charge them to join. You give them credit if there's value to their system. The pipes, unless you dig them up and look at them, you really don't know. That's why we have that five-year thing in there. We don't know what the pipes are going to look like. We can operate the valves. We can operate the hydrants. We can look at some of the stuff that's above ground. We can evaluate it. We can't evaluate the pipe without digging up and actually looking at it.
Sure. Can that value that we assess to their infrastructure have a negative value?
Could.
Okay. Meaning that if we evaluate it, like, we know going into it that we have to replace mains? That would be a negative value.
Either replace mains, or if we have to, their wells are no value to us, we have to abandon them. So it's going to cost us to abandon them.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
How much does it cost to abandon a well usually?
Ten thousand dollars, in size. Probably $10,000, $10,000, $12,000.
What's the process for abandoning a well? So they just, I mean, as far as what all has to be done to it?
You have to pull out the pumping equipment. Usually you have to somehow perforate the well casing. Sometimes they use a tool that shoots shot through it. Sometimes they ripple tools through there that physically tears holes in the pipe. Then they have to fill or pull up concrete that night. So the deeper it is, the bigger hole, more expensive it gets. I don't know a lot about any of their wells.
We have very little knowledge of their systems. Just to make it clear. The other thing, too, we did talk about in the policy, city staff, we can do most of the evaluation of it. We won't charge them. We'll use our city staff, but certain things we can't. A well, we would have to hire a consultant to do that. Kind of the people that put our new wells in, those would be a consultant that we'd hire to look at their wells. But we tried to do as much as we could with city staff and not charge them for the evaluation of it.
How many wells do we have that we've taken over in the past? Still in operation? One, just one.
One out of the three systems we've taken over.
Mike, Mike.
Microphone, please. Could you repeat that?
One out of the, actually, two, because well eight. One's a real small well. Two out of the four systems we've taken over.
Is that Lakewood Meadows?
That well, that well we're not using.
Okay.
It's not abandoned yet. It's due to be abandoned this year, only because the water in it is really ugly.
The tannins in that one?
The tannins and dissolved solids in it are really high, and it's just not worth trying to treat it and take it out.
Any other questions? Put some thought into this because this is, whatever you come up for a policy, will be probably hitting our doorstep sooner than you think with some of these. So, you know, some of the private trusts are in pretty good shape and some aren't, so.
Hill Park Meadows had another water main break today.
Yeah, right.
Do we know what trust are in good shape and which ones aren't?
All four of them out there have some issues.
Okay. Because I know the one on Cornell, I think, has had two main breaks within the last.
Right, and that's probably as far as main breaks go, not really too bad. Hill Park Meadows, a couple of years ago, had like five or six of them in a matter of two or three weeks.
Yeah, because I know I talked to the person from that trust that heads it up over there, and they have some in there, but he's not too sure of, you know, what's going to happen if. There's a third one.
They would be the easiest one to connect because we have a pipe within feet of their pipe.
Okay.
The other ones, it'll take some getting.
And when you call them in, are you going to go over stuff like that and?
We'll talk about this policy. We've had some early discussions with them already, especially Marlin Meadows. But I've talked to the guy that you did from.
Yeah, he seems pretty knowledgeable for.
He's, yeah.
Yeah.
He kind of got it dumped in his lap, but he's coming right along.
It seems like it, yeah.
He's understanding it, so.
All right. Okay, we're moving on to policy number two, service connection policy. So what we looked at, kind of just the two options. Scenario one, water main extension. And scenario two, existing water main is available, but resident is currently not connected. So the first two for each, we gave you the existing policy. Connection required once private well fails with no option to drill new well, and that's for both of them. That's our current policy. We, so here's some of the options we could do. If you're looking at scenario A for number two, we could do a connection required 10, 15, 20 years. We gave you 10, 15, 20 years because you guys can decide if you want to go this way. Remember, we're not forcing you. It's your decision to go this way if you don't like the existing policy. We just threw numbers in there, 10, 15, 20, so that you guys have options or you guys can suggest something else. And that's from city water available, being available, or at the point of a sale of home. That could be another way of doing it. So you don't put the burden on the original homeowner, but when you sell it, then it kind of kicks in. So these are just kind of things that we've kind of pulled from other communities and just for you to look at. Or another one is connection required within a specific number of days from written city notice. And we just kind of threw an option out there for you to guys to look at. The scenarios for existing water main is available. Again, connection required 10, 15, 20 years from city water availability or at the point of sale, or no requirement for direct connection. Now, again, you guys could say, we just want to keep existing policy for both, and that's what we do. We make sure it's solidified, and we just then move forward. That just allows us to plan. We just need to plan. And what that means is if we got costs coming based off of our water study, then we say, okay, this is happening. We have to reach out to Sharon. We have to figure out some type of funding source, and then that comes to you guys and how we have to do it. But we just need to know to plan, so.
Questions, thoughts? Talkative bunch.
And if you guys, again, I think we gave you, the first time in July, we gave you a matrix of like what different various communities have. If you don't have that, again, let me know, and I can kind of send you that matrix or that Excel sheet.
Why don't you resend that, just?
Okay.
Have it fresh.
Just to kind of, so.
It seems to me that the municipalities I'm associated with or familiar of, or familiar with, they all are at the point of fail of a well. But some are fail of a well or the sale of a property. I don't know if that's typical, or I know New Berlin is.
Some are, but actually, a lot of them do not have forced connections, right? That's from, if you look at that original spreadsheet, I think the only one who does is Brookfield. Is that right? Around kind of our area is the only one, and theirs is, and I only know that because I'm going to deal with that in two years in my own house because of one of my well. But then I have 10 years to sign up once I get the water in front of my house. But when we looked at other places, not a lot of places require connection. And I will send you that Excel spreadsheet again, but I just want to let you know, I believe, Mike, Scott.
Town and the city.
Town and city, yeah.
I'm sorry, which one?
A city.
Both the town and the city of Brookfield require connections.
Yeah. But those are the only ones, right, I think, in the southeast area that we found?
It's more common out in the state. In southeast Wisconsin, it's not real common, but if you get out to other parts of the state, it is more common.
Okay. Okay, the last one, water main relay assessment policy. Relay, okay. That means replacement. The water mains are already in the ground, past someone, in front of someone's house. They're using the water. The pipes have reached their limit of, like Scott said, 50 years. They need to be replaced. When I described this one to you, we said we found no one that does this. This is kind of political suicide, whereas I described this one to you guys beforehand. So basically, the options do not assess residents. That's number three. Utility to cover all costs. That's pretty much the policy in every area. I don't think we found a community that does assessments for relays or replacements. Just to let you know. We could follow, option one, we could follow or modify current water main assessment policy. Residents responsible for all costs. Two, assess residents with a cap cost and utility covers remain costs, or do not assess residents and utility to cover all costs, so.
Could you describe that water main relay? I don't get that.
Okay.
Relaying it, not a relay, but like literally putting in a new pipe.
For example.
Relaying.
Relaying, relaying the pipe. So, for example, we took over three places back in the 70s and 80s. Those pipes are at that point of failing. So they're being used now. They're part of the water, you know, utility. We're probably, and we've got costs about $8 million. At some point, they're going to completely fail. When that happens, we're going to have to replace all the mains all the way through. I think it's around $8 million. Again, that was $8 million two years ago. Prices have gone up to do all three systems. Does the utility pay for it all? Or do you assess persons to do it? Even though they're already paying for it, they're already paying their WCA charge, they're paying their utility bill, it's kind of a hard sell sometimes to, hey, I'm going to assess you for something that you're already using, where you already have a utility rate, and you paid into the WCA.
I think out of all the things brought in front of us today, this might be the easiest decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's almost like a road.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
It's just, we just need to make sure, I want it clearly stated that we're not doing this so that we don't have any questions for when I'm gone, Scott's gone, and all you guys are gone, so that there's no questions for anyone down the way.
Do we have an established hookup fee?
WCA.
The WCA was our established hookup fee when they first started, right?
Okay, so when you have a relay, do they get charged a hookup fee then?
No.
No, that's only charged once.
One time, yeah.
Which in theory, that's what the WCA is supposed to cover.
Right.
Correct.
Infrastructure cost.
This is coming to a head because those community water systems we've taken over in the past, the pipes are starting to fail. And as we're trying to plan for when those roads need to be repaired and replaced, we do the water main at that time. So it's going to be, it's on the horizon. It's going to have to be done sooner than later. So we need to plan for it. We need a policy.
Yeah. And how we talked about it, and John, you kind of talked about it last time, is, so we'll probably have to borrow, and then when we borrow, we do this project. And then maybe at that time, we don't do a standard rate increase. We do a bigger rate increase. And for example, the big one that's been in the news is Germantown had like an 85% utility, water utility increase that they're going to do because of the stuff that they need to do. So that means the users of the utility will have to have, you know, we just do standard increases. This will probably be a reason to do a more significant increase based off of those costs, so.
Which is also why that first policy, what we're talking about, having some sort of warranty on systems are taking over, so we don't run into this situation, you know, four years into it.
Yeah.
Can the utility, can the utility work ahead by increasing rates early?
Only through a simplified rate case. So the way the PSC allows you to increase your rates are based on your current costs, not your planned costs, so.
So we're basically under restrictions in that area?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So if we took on a system and it required a relay, in my mind, how fair is that to the other users who?
Well, think about.
That's why we value the system.
Right.
Yeah.
So that, when I talked about a negative value.
And think about this, the private water trust, that's a different policy than a relay. Do you know what I mean? That private water trust, that's always had a separate policy because that's a whole different animal. Because we don't own that yet.
But it is and it isn't, because if we don't have that policy in there of the warranty.
Yeah.
Then.
Correct, with that.
We have to relay these, they're connected.
Yeah.
Right.
That's correct with that point.
Tough one.
And he's, you know, I think throwing out those numbers, like he said, $8 million, so that sliding scale that you suggested, while it sounds good, may be something you want to look at a little harder because that $8 million is going to get paid from somewhere. And they're the ones asking to hook up.
I mean, I think eight was the entire system, right?
Eight was the three systems that, we did three subdivisions that were failing.
Okay.
And we looked at it probably three years ago, and we looked at design, that's design and construction. So right now, construction costs have really jumped up.
So like two and a third, two and two third, 2.6 million per?
Okay, yeah.
So if it fails, that would be the cost.
Yeah, got it. And a couple of them, we consistently do repairs every year. Like Lake Brittany, Crystal Dones. We probably have a water main break once or twice a year on average.
Usually at least.
Yeah. So again, we're just looking for your comments in the next two months. Feel free to email us, talk to us again. But what we're going to try to do is in May, we're going to, we're going to look for you to come to you and get some of this policy kind of passed. We need just some direction from you guys.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Any communications in this lady's business? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the ARPA funds. Do you want to just give a quick? This is again, something we're going to start talking about, but it's going to come back. So in front of you, Sharon will go through this, there's a sheet that she's going to be.
We have a listing of exclusive eligible uses. Basically breaks down everything. I know for, throughout the budget discussions, we did narrow down on the water and sewer infrastructure costs. So far, we received about $1.3 million, and that is exactly 50% of the funds, so a total of 2.6 million that we should receive by next June, I believe. And council will have until December 31st to incur the expenses. So you do have some time to think about this, but we have to start reporting in 2022.
Does everyone know what the ARPA funds are? This is the money, essentially the COVID money that each of the states, that was funneled down from the states to each of the municipalities. This sheet in front of you kind of goes through areas that we can spend it on and what we can't. So like, it might make sense, like, oh, we're doing a road. You're not allowed to do roads. If you're relaying pipe underneath the road and the road has to be rebuilt, you can't. So there's different things you can and can't do with it. From our perspective, looking at using it for our utility infrastructure, which you guys had that talk a while ago about where we are with our water needs and expanding water service, might make most sense to put it into that based on what we can use it on. But we're here to get, kind of get some initial conversations going about that. If anyone sees something on here that they think we should be looking at, now's the time to maybe bring that up so we can start those discussions as well.
Is that only infrastructure improvements, or we're having to create something? Can it be used that way, too?
Yeah, you can, you mean like expanding something?
Yeah.
Yes, you can expand. Yeah, and that's kind of what our thoughts are, you know, maybe we'll look at some areas. Maybe there's, for instance, say there's an area of the city that we want to try to get some economic development go, but there aren't water or sewer in that area. We could, instead of having, waiting for a developer to come out and spend, you know, a few million dollars to expand water to an area, maybe that's something we'd want to put water to that area to try to encourage commercial growth in those areas. That's something we could look at. There may be areas of the city where it makes sense for the water system to be looped, to make the system stronger. That'd be something to look at. Thoughts, comments?
I think we're working with the school district as well on some of these, or is it, or do they have separate funds?
They have separate funds.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it'd be the nature of loans or grants to small businesses that's in that second.
However you want to set that up, you can get really creative with that, where you can just do outright grants to targeted businesses. Like say if you want to pick, say daycares or restaurants or, you know, anything, you can do targeted grants that are applied for, similar to what the state's doing on their level. Milwaukee does it quite a bit. I don't know of any, for my discussions with New Berlin, Brookfield, and, I'm not sure about Waukesha, but definitely Brookfield and New Berlin are not doing anything like that for businesses. And I would, I would caution us on doing that. I don't think our, I mean, there are some restaurants that were impacted by COVID, definitely, but I just don't, my feeling is it's not the best use of these monies.
No.
Do we have any particular areas of the city where stormwater is a huge issue that would be addressed?
Yes.
Well, I don't know for stormwater, but remember, we also have that MSDGI grants or credits back. And I think we're close to what, I think, Mayor, like almost a million bucks.
Yeah.
On that one. So I was thinking more of those would be for the stormwater issues, and you could use this more for the utility. But we always have little things that we can fix in stormwater, like culvert pipes, or we always have a Kelsey road study down there, but nothing has been really in particular about that, so. But don't forget those funds, too. We opted out of that program, and our credits are close to a million, I think, this year.
And that's something, that's probably another discussion on what we'd want to do with those, but there are some areas of the city that consistently have stormwater issues that we've never really been able to address because you can only do so much with the stuff that's around there. I mean, there's areas, quite honestly, there's houses built that those houses should have never been there.
Sure.
We actually may want to look at sometimes on the line of purchasing those houses and putting a pond in that area where it should have been. Because there's really no feasible way of fixing some of the stormwater issues in some areas. But I think using the green infrastructure credits we have towards that might be a first start.
Talk a little bit about behavioral health care. Is that something police department could take advantage of with substance abuse treatment, crisis intervention?
We would have to, I think what we would have to, I'm not sure if it'd be more of a partnership with the police department, but maybe the schools or something like that.[1765.84] a partnership with the police department, but maybe the schools or something like that. And we'd have to, since we don't have any public facilities for, like city-owned facilities, we'd partner with somebody for something like that.
Okay, so this is pretty much for?
No, we, we, you could use, I, I believe you could use the money for something like that if you wanted to, but we, we would have to partner with, say, um, the name of the place is escaping me, Rogers Memorial or someplace like that to, to do something like that. Um, quite honestly, I don't have anyone on staff that's got enough expertise to really dive into that, but something we can look at if that's, if there's interest in the council doing that.
I just know it's a, it's a big issue, especially with the substance abuse and mental health issues going on. Um, just didn't know if that's something we could take advantage of or-
I, I would-
Or how.
I would suggest if, if that's a direction you, the council would want to go, that